Did you like that? Can I do that again? No, it didn't happen, all right. So, welcome to tonight's study session. We'll call the meeting to order. This is June 3rd, 2024, and we will be talking about hauled waste disposal tonight. Larry, do you want to set this up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If I can, just have a few minutes before I pass the baton to Mr. Lewis and Ms. Owensby. We, as the mayor and council is aware, the, one of the services that are provided out at our wastewater treatment plant is the septic disposal, both for septic waste as well as for chemical toilets. And the mayor and council is aware that a year ago, there were some rate modifications, as well as some protocol changes that took place out at the plant. And while we are not, staff is not proposing any additional rate increases for fiscal year 25, the mayor and council asked that we have a study session to provide more details to the mayor and council before we consider our rate and fee schedule, which is scheduled for the mayor and council on June the 13th, sorry, June 17th, thank you, June 17th. And, and so with that, this, this is a, as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, this is a study session format, and the rates will be considered at our next regular council meeting. So with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Lewis to begin the presentation.
Thank you. I did make some changes. We made some changes to the presentation that was included in your packet, so there are some changes, and we'll get the, the record updated with that final version. And I'll try to go through these slides as quickly as possible and cover just the highlights, but want to make sure I give council ample opportunity to ask any questions that they might have. And feel free to ask any questions during the presentation as well. We do manage our, our, our hauled waste through our pre-treatment program. And pre-treatment is where we typically have to do some level of treatment before a discharger is allowed to let their waste come to our facility. There are zero dischargers or, or folks with just residential-type waste coming from their businesses. And then we have our industrial users, which we've got 21 that are currently permitted and have to do pre-treatment before they discharge, and then we manage that. For fat, oil, and greases, that's typically our restaurants or other food-type companies. And we have to manage the, the grease traps in those facilities to make sure they're being maintained to keep that type of material out of the, the waste stream. And then we have our hauled waste from our septic haulers. We found records that go back 23-plus years that we've been receiving septicage, and we had flat rates per load, $30 per load for in-city haulers, and then 45 for those that were outside of our city limits, as far as the business goes. And then, at some point, on or before 2010, our records really don't show it, and I just have zero recall, we used to take the septic at a manhole closer to Florence and I-10, and our operators would actually drive out there, meet the haul companies, and visually observe their dumping out there. And then we moved that dump site to our plant, and we currently have that at our current plant. This is our current dump site. You'll see that it is fenced off so that people just can't come out there without our authority to dump waste into our system. And over the years, obviously, as a pre-treatment program, we were permitted, and that's through our ZPT's permit with the state, ADEQ, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. They do regular inspections, audits, and provide verbal comments, as well as written comments, prior to moving into any violations for any of our operations. And so far, our operation is compliant, but over the last few years, we have been getting good, clear direction from ADEQ what they want us to do and how we process these loads, including the testing that we now do on each load before we allow it to dump on-site, which is something we did not do in the past.
And Kevin, is that required by ADEQ? The, the testing?
It was in our, our last write-up, when they did their audit of our program, those were their recommendations, that we move, move the dump site inside the fence so that we have 100% containment. The site outside the fence doesn't have containment if we do have a spill, so they want to see that inside our fence. And we are currently in the process of designing and then moving into construction of that site that will be within the fence. So we are moving in that direction, but we've moved forward with all the other steps that we have to take, which is the testing and making sure that we're, we're charging a fair amount for our processing of those wastes.
Thank you.
Again, $30 and $45 was our flat rate, and then in 2018, we did a rate increase, and we changed that to $30 per 1,000 gallons. So that was a sliding scale, depending on the amount of gallons that someone dumped, that was their fee. And then in 2023, we made our final adjustments to date, and that's where type 1 septic, and obviously, there are three types of septic, and that is the amount of COD that is in the, that's chemical oxygen demand, that's in the materials that they're dumping, and there are three levels. Level 1 is the least impact on the plant, and we are charging $35 per 1,000 gallons for that. Type 2, which was a much stronger, or nine, greater than 900 milligrams per liter of COD in those, and that's $85 per thousand. And then the type 3, which is your chemical toilets, which is a much higher strength, and that's the 125 per thousand that we are charging for that.
Kevin, why is that important? Why are those levels important?
Because that's, that's the effort that our plant has to go through to treat these higher-strength flows into the plant. Later on, I do have a slide that kind of shows a comparison of a normal household versus the impact of, of these types of flows coming into our system.
Because I think I know, I understand it, but I'm, I want to make sure the public understand it, because there's, there's different strengths here in terms of the chemicals that are used, right, within each of these operations, right? So you've got septic tank versus a chemical toilet you see, you know, on, on a, in a construction site, right? And they have a little higher...
And then, and there could also be blended loads, where that's where you're probably going to, you know, be that type 2.
Somewhere type 2, okay.
Can I ask Kevin as well, Mr. Mayor, is this typical with other cities too? They do that comparison at thousand, per thousand gallons? There's a certain rate that they do? Is that typical?
We, we do have some other city rates in here, in just a few slides. We'll go through that, and then...
What's the, what's the COD again?
Chemical oxygen demand.
So it's the amount of oxygen that's required?
Our plant is an environment, I can never say it, a biological plant. So we've got bugs out there that help us digest the waste that's delivered to us. If that oxygen demand is too high, it will negatively impact their ability to do their job. So we need to regulate that and manage that to make sure our plant stays as stable as possible.
So that higher COD means that it's, it's demanding, it's, it's taking away oxygen from our bugs?
Yes.
Okay.
So our normal, our normal waste, I'll jump to that number, our normal waste that comes into our plant, the septic waste that comes in is 33 times higher strength than our normal flows. So that's a huge impact. We've also got industries that, that have that same impact on us, and that's why we require that pre-treatment. This enters our system, and we have to treat it with our plant. So we don't have a pre-treatment on this particular flow, which is something we're looking at, having the ability to regulate as we move forward with the new design.
And Kevin, back to my question. So I guess you have some more slides later on that would explain the reason why there's a thousand, per thousand, $35, and then so on, right?
Yeah, and, and it's hard to compare apples to apples, because no, no two plants are, are alike. Each process is different, and waste impacts their processes differently. So it's, it's hard to compare, you know, like for like, but we, we did use Apache Junction's program, which ADEQ recommended. We take a look at their program, and we've modeled our program after theirs, and that's the direction we've moved in. So I'll be showing that here in just a minute. And obviously, the, the impacts of these types of flows, if there are contaminants in this that we don't remove during our normal treatment process, we could pass through that through our plant, and then that would be part of our discharge. And we never want that to happen, because our, our whole goal is to reclaim that water and not impact the environment negatively. Interference, interference with our plant, obviously, if our, our bugs get impacted by a slug load, that has a hiccup on our plant, and we have to mitigate that as we try to control that process. And then those, those sludge contamination, obviously, we've got solids that we manage through our plant and deliver out to our landfill. We need to manage that process as well, and that can be impacted by these flows. And this is the slide that shows 33,000 milligrams per liter, which is 33 times higher than our, our normal C D, COD that comes in through the plant.
Well, and that's primarily because the, the waste coming from our communities, from the, from homes, doesn't have any treatment in it. There's no concentrate, right, in it?
Typically, the, the amount of impact of what they send down the drain is, is, is pretty low.
Okay.
So that's what our plant is designed to treat.
And has water flushing it down too, right? So it's not concentrated?
Yeah, it's all mixed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi. The, also, whenever you're, they hold on to their septic long, for longer periods of time, I mean, EPA recommends between three and five years that you have your septic system serviced. We've seen where they've been holding it more than 10 years, and that's when we're seeing the concentrations that are over the 33,000 and have had to reject the loads. So, you know, we've reached out even with, with some of the haulers when something has happened like that, to say, do you, and they still came back to us, informed us well, come to find out that that system hadn't been serviced.
And the city has nothing to do with septic system management. That's all done through the county, so we aren't part of that permit process. We do allow septic systems within the city if they're not close enough to our, our sewer mains. So we do have quite a few places that have septic within our city, but it's not something that we manage as a regulatory authority.
Kevin, just for clarification, when you talk about the septic though, and you had, you had mentioned about them not doing it for like 10 years, that's the property owners, that's not the business owner that has the septic.
Correct.
Okay, just to clarify. Okay.
So this slide basically shows the prices for the different, oops, I think I went the wrong direction. Nope, I didn't. There we go. This shows the different fees that we charge for those types, the 33 per 10,000, the 91 per, for the type 2, and then the 225 for the type 3. So these are the, the septic, or excuse me, the wastewater facilities in our area that do not accept septic. And I'm not sure if any of them did, but we know they don't today, nor do they plan on collect, or receiving septic in the future that we're aware of.
Was global part of that? I didn't notice. They were on there? Okay.
Yes, yes, correct. So we, we mentioned that we modeled our program after the Apache Junction program that they have in place, per ADEQ's recommendation. And you can see their rates on here, and I realize this is a rate per gallon, and I should have converted that, but pretty simple. It's $33 for, per thousand for a type 1, 85 for a type, or excuse me, 88 for a type 2, and then 253 for a type 3 disposal. So that's what they're currently charging at their facility. And then Prescott is another organization that does collect septic, and they've just gone through a, a rate change. These are their current rates. And then this is their rate plan moving into the future. And as you can see, in 2024, for the septic, it'll be 200, and then out through 2029, they'll be 225, is where they're going to be at per thousand.
No matter what?
Excuse me?
They don't test it there? That's just a flat fee per thousand?
No, I'm sure they test it as well.
But it doesn't matter what the concentration was?
It doesn't matter if it's tier 1 or 2, 3?
Correct. Yeah, we're not, you know, we got this information, but I'm not sure how they manage their program up there. They could have different tiers, but we couldn't find it on the research that we did.
Does Phoenix or any of the other larger cities receive septic?
Yeah, I believe Phoenix does. We did not get their information. They're a very large organization, and really didn't think it was right to compare them to us. They're just, they're a different monster.
Okay.
I know, we're all monsters. Okay. So here's the rate comparisons of those three organizations, with ours being 35 up to $250. Prescott is 200, and then Apache Junction, that range of 33 up to 253. So if you think about someone with a septic system, that's their disposal for their waste. And our residents who currently are on our system and flush toilets, and we, we service their waste, they are currently charging, we charge them $33.70 per month for their sewer services. Doesn't matter the amount that they send us, we charge a flat rate. We did the math when we did our last rate study, and it didn't make sense for us to have a graduated rate for our residents. The flat rate was the best way to move forward with our fees. But if you can look down at the bottom there, it shows someone that, and, and prices for septic hauling, we've found residents can be charged anywhere from $550 to $1,100 for, for a load when they have their system serviced. And if you look at that, it turns out that that's about $15.27 per month for $550 per load when they have it cleaned out, up to $30.59, 56 cents for that $1,100 bill for that septic. So obviously, it, it costs money to manage those things, and that's the price that they pay, but it's always at one time, not monthly. So that's why they see those impacts. And I know we've received a few phone calls, but when we talk to people and explain that to them, it kind of calms them down, and they understand why we charge what we charge. Because of course, when we raise our rates, the septic haulers raise their rates, because obviously, they need to cover their costs.
Sure.
Associated with the programs that they provide. And then, just a last bit of information. In 2019, we received 58 loads a month on average, and that's been increasing. 2022, we were actually up to 207 loads a month, and then in 2023, we were averaging 173 loads a month. And to look at that in gallons, it's about 3,611 gallons per month on average that we're receiving currently. Is that one right?
That's the year.
That's per year? Okay. So that's total per year that we're receiving on that average?
But comparative year-over-year?
Yeah. So it's definitely not going down, it's going up, and while we still receive septic, we just need to manage it. And once we are closer to completion of our plant expansion, and we know the true cost of our program in our new location, we're also going to be doing a rate study, and we'll look at this in, in greater detail to determine, you know, what those prices should be, and then we'll modify our, our fees associated with this service when we have that additional information. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, just a quick question for me. So we require other industries to do some sort of a pre-treatment. Is there a possibility now that as you're moving this inside the fence, is there a way to do a pre-treatment for this process? For this, for these, for these users? And then, I mean, if it...
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the ability with the new facility, and I've got Brian, Brian from Wilson and Company, who is helping us design the plant. We, we will have the ability to manage those flows as we release them into the plant. So if we do get a very high-strength load that we don't want to just introduce into the system, we can introduce it at, at a certain rate to help us manage that.
So we, we could trickle, trickle it in versus all, just all of it dumping it in?
We will have that.
But can we also treat it? I mean, is there a way to maybe kill their bugs so they don't kill our bugs?
I wish it was that simple, but go ahead, Kevin.
It's not their bugs.
Well, they have chemicals, we have bugs.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm going to let Brian, he's...
Sure. Texas A&amp;M, go ahead.
Sorry. And my son just graduated there, I didn't go there, but very, very proud of him.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. So just a few things I'll add, just on that specific question, Mr. Mayor. The new system not only has a way to, to hold it, to trickle it in, but it also has the ability to direct it through the new aeration basin, the, so, which is an equalization basin that's aerated, and that will be able to provide some pre-treatment for that to help stabilize the plant. And that was something that was included as part of the design for just that reason. That's the reason that was put in that way. A couple other things I'll just add to this is one way to think about that. So the chemical action demand, the largest expense for operating the plant is power, electricity. And the, by far, the largest of that is the aeration of the biological process. And so, and that's, that is to, to aerate, it provides oxygen into the, the biological system. And so if you have a chemical action demand that is 33 times what the household level is, it's, it costs you 33 times more energy, right? So the energy cost is 33 times that of the largest cost on the O&M for the plant. So that's really something to consider there, that it does take a lot of extra money just on the energy costs to, to do that. And then secondly, you know, over, over the years, it, the, the stringency on protect the environment for ADEQ is rightly getting more and more stringent, and so that requires more and more testing. As you said, on the, on the pass-throughs, you know, that, that could easily be a notice of violation if, if there isn't a slug or something overwhelming. And so the testing requirements and the monitoring has, has to increase, and there's, there's costs involved in that that needs to be borne by the city as well to make sure, because once it's, it's into the plant, it's a responsibility of the city, you can't go back and blame the, the hauler on it for, for several reasons, first of which is hard to know exactly if that's what caused the problem or not. And so, so I just wanted to add those, those couple of, of items.
Is there, then let me ask you, since you were kind of the resident expert here, what about, what about other chemicals that could be used for the waste haulers? Is there other chemicals that could be more biologically friendly than what is currently being used?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if I understand the question. You mean, is there something they could use in the portable, in the portable toilets or something like that?
Yes.
You know, it's, it's a question I don't really have an answer for. It's pretty standard what they use for that, and that's mainly to keep down, keep down the odors and make sure it can last long enough. And so I'm not an expert on the technology of what those, those chemicals that they use are, but they're very high in chemical action demand. And so, you know, I mean, obviously, they're not going to do anything about it unless it costs them more. If it costs them more, then they would probably do something about it. But, you know, I, I'm really not an expert in that area.
Okay. Have we looked into that, Kevin?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Is it something we could look into?
I mean, yeah, we can, we can look into it. I would probably look at the septic hauling community and ask them that question. I mean, that's the business that they're in. So that's something, we can definitely have that conversation.
Well, I think if it impacts us, if it impacts the city and impacts our waste system, which it obviously does, then I think those are questions we should be asking them. We should be pushing back on them a little bit to do some research, and at least look into, you know, what opportunities and/or alternative types of chemicals might be available? Because I've heard there are, but I've not heard anybody talk about them.
We did take a look, kind of a cursory look at the other chemicals, and they cost a lot more money, and they don't appear to drastically reduce the issues.
Okay.
But we, we haven't taken a detailed look at it.
Okay. Well, I'd recommend we at least dig into it a little bit, if we can. Just my two cents. Donna?
Just to follow up, Kevin, you had mentioned about such an increase in how much we were getting, and you had talked earlier about inside city limits versus outside city limits fees. From those numbers, do we know how, how many are outside of our city limits that are bringing them in, out of all of them?
Well, they have to provide us with a manifest where, where it comes, the septic is coming from. So we keep that, and, and we track that, but I don't have that information in front of us to say, this is what's coming from inside, and this is what's from outside.
Because all, most of the activity is here.
Well, and I'm just, the reason I'm asking that is because of all the cities do, do not accept it.
Yeah, that's true.
Are they coming into our city? And if that's the case, then those doing business within our city, I, I think that that's something that I'd like to know a little bit more about.
Yeah, good point.
And when we increase those rates, that could have been why the 2023 numbers dipped a little bit from 2022, was those people who were coming here no longer saw the benefit and are taking it elsewhere.
That's okay.
I, I think that we enlarged our area, if I remember right, because one of the problems we were worried about was illegal dumping. So for our local haulers, if they got it from, I think Arizona City, just a little bit outside of our city limits, if I'm correct, right? So they could do that?
Yeah, we're currently bring, take, or accepting it from anywhere in Pinal County.
Okay. And then...
We were going to make a change and do it just in our planning area, our wastewater planning area, which isn't even as large as our city could be. So that was a little bit too restrictive, and when we heard the septic haulers' concerns, we, we made that change.
So when you talk about the pre-treatment from these other facilities, is there an actual facility they have on their site, or?
Yes.
And I, because I think some of the other guys, the septic haulers and, and the rental companies were looking at doing their own pre-treatment, which would help with this as well, right? So they could do it?
Definitely an option, but you know, there's a cost, there's a cost to that process, and, you know, they have to, they have to pencil that out and determine, you know, what, what they could do and, and what, how that would impact their business.
So yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have what's called local limits. So we look at our plant, we look at what our plant can handle, and we look at our permits, and that determines what the limits of each of those constituents are that we're able to accept. So if a company comes in and it's a higher strength that they're, they're planning to send us, they need to treat it to bring it down to our local limits so that our plant doesn't get upset.
Okay. And then I have a couple correspondence from other companies too that aren't here tonight, and they came to me. And, and one of the biggest concerns, I guess, they're having is that, that the classification of the loads, like the testing, is what they tell me is they think they should be level 2, but a lot of times they're being recorded as level 3. And so that's where they get a lot of the, you know, a lot of the, the problems, because the rate jumps up quite a bit to the, to level 3. They sent me a billing statement and stuff too, and it looks like they're, they had about half and half level 2 and level 3 loads. This is from a septic hauler, not a, not a chemical toilet company. I keep saying, rent a, you know, rent a can company. Not specifically that company, but you know, that business, sorry. But, you know, and they, they're just saying if they could understand more about how the methodology that's being used, and insight into the training protocols and testing criteria of how they get it, so they can maybe be more aware of what's going on and how they could help do that. Because they, you know, they all want to be in compliance, they're running legitimate businesses here, and, and they don't, you know, and the one thing I could see is, and I, you know, is we want to make sure that the stuff gets handled properly. And the other thing I'm thinking, so our plant's like, what, it's going up to 18 million gallons a day? It's at 6. I mean, so if you said we had 173 loads, the average one I was looking at here was like 2,500 gallons, 170, that's like half a million gallons a year. I mean, isn't that kind of like a small drop in it? Drop in the bucket, person, you know? I mean, when we're doing that many million gallons a day? Yeah.
It is, but it's such a high-concentrated strength. It is, but it's such a high concentrated strength, thirty-three times what our normal flows are coming into the plant.
Just in that one, cause right now it goes straight, it goes straight in pretty much?
Yeah, it does.
So, I mean, that's the concerns we're hearing. And then I guess if we could look into these, I, I've heard that there are different chemicals and they've been researching them from companies in town that maybe. Cause septic chemicals in my limited understanding are more like what we use biologic, biologic stuff. And the chemical toilets are a chemical, so maybe something like that. But you know, it's just such a big increase so quickly that it impacts their business model. So hopefully we can, you know, answer some of their questions. And I'll provide you guys with this information that I got.
And we're confident in our testing and we did originally send our, our, we split samples and we sent it off to a lab. And actually the lab was coming in higher than what we were testing it for. So I think we're conservative when we find a load that's over, it's probably even more than what we're, we're seeing.
But you are getting a check. That's good to know, yeah.
We, we do not allow them to dump until we get the results. And then we do check that just to calibrate to make sure that we're in line.
We do a, a, it's almost an instantaneous with a, a probe. And then after we find that it, what range that it's in. We do classify it as a type at that point in time to try, try and let them know what it is that we're finding. But we go back and we do a Hock method. It ends up taking about two hours in order to heat it up, another half an hour to cool it off so that we can read it with that. And the majority of the sampling that we've, the results that we've been getting, the probe has actually been lower. There has been some cases where it is out of whack. And we also send some, the samples after we test them in-house, we also send that to our certified lab. And the city's just been paying for that at this point in time. But the lab results have actually been coming in very close to what we, we do. Now again, when you get those ones that are off range. We go through a, a calibration of the probes. So we usually see it within that two-hour timeframe of, of when we've tested in-house. And we're going back in and recalibrating that probe. So unfortunately, one of the loads may have come in where it had gotten off of calibration. But we do go back and, and readjust it. So, but we do see it and we have been making that adjustment in the rates. So if it came in and the probe said that it was at a higher rate. We have been going back and giving them actually the, charging them for the lower rate that it came through based off of the lab testing.
Lisa?
You know, and Mayor, you talked about the septic hauling community and I'm not sure how big that community is. But I was just curious how often you may meet with them, you know, when you're considering rate modifications. And some of these, you know, guidelines and restrictions and, you know, testing models and stuff. Are we, you know, what type of communication is going out to them to make sure that they can, they're doing what they need to on their end? To, to keep up with, you know, all, all of that, those requirements. And again, I, I'm not sure how large that, that community is, but curious the communication that may go. To avoid some of the concerns and outreach and, you know, pushback.
All I can say is our communication is getting better. It has not been the best and, and we've seen where we've come up short. And we are working on trying to improve that and we'll continue to do that.
Right, okay. Cause it can eliminate and or avoid a lot of these concerns, so thank you.
And making them part of the solutions that are part of the problem. I think that's the key. We're gonna be looking at that same thing and, well, different subject, sorry. Bob, Anthony, anybody?
Just a comment on that and to piggyback on what Lisa said. I think that the communication is really important and some of the stuff that we've received. You know, says there has been lack of communication and that concerns me. Because we're talking apparently almost a year that this has been going on. So for every month that that goes on, it's costing the business more money. And so we just need to do our part to make sure that we are, you know, getting this information a little bit more quickly. So we can make a decision on the seventeenth.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have to adjourn this one?
Oh, does he have a question?
Well, this isn't a public hearing. No, sir. Well, if you'd like to ask a question, go ahead. I don't know that there is one tonight. Is there on septic?
No.
If you have a question on septic, now's the time to ask and I'll, I'll allow it. Go ahead. Yeah, if you could come up to the microphone, cause there's people watching online.
We, we have certain jobs we do two or three times a week and they come up high in C O D. I don't understand how it works. And then like I, I used to pump, oh, probably a hundred thousand gallons a week of chemical toilet in Phoenix. And not one time did I have a C O D. I took it to Apache Junction, not one time did I have a C O D. And last year alone in Apache Junction, they had one C O D. I'm just, I'm not very smart, but maybe the equipment they got bought don't work right. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. We'll, we'll make sure that it works properly. Okay. All right, well, thank, thank you both. And yeah, we'll adjourn this portion of the study session.